First formal meeting, this is an organizing meeting. We have on the agenda to organize the committee. Second item is evaluate revised change from the select board meeting. We're going to talk about what they decided about a week ago in terms of how this board, how this committee is composed. We're going to review council on aging survey. Then we're going to hopefully maybe develop and finalize some questions for the townwide survey if that's required. Then we're going to allocate some homework. And then we'll schedule a November meeting. And we'll discuss some other items, a discussion appointment by consensus, a writing committee to accumulate research and data points. I'll share that with you. So it's now 5:30. My name is Joe Demora. I'm on the town meeting study committee. And I just want to go down the line with names and who you are and for the general public to know who we are.
Excellent. My name is Alyssa Lee. I'm the director of the Groveland Council on Aging.
My name is Jennifer Peterson, and I am the town clerk.
I'm Patrick Molina. I'm on a number of boards in the town and interested in helping out in this committee.
My name is Emilio Dunn, and I'm a somewhat new resident as of 2021, looking to help out the town.
All right. I'm going to open up with the agenda item of organizing the committee. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Emilio Dunn as the secretary for the committee. Purpose of the secretary is to record minutes and also to help compile the reports. Do I have a second?
Amelia, do you want to do this?
Sure.
Then I will second the motion.
I forgot to mention that the pay and the benefits are unbelievable.
Great.
All right. So how shall we vote? Alyssa, for or against?
For.
Four.
Four?
Four.
Four.
Very unanimous.
Okay, so it's unanimous. Could you record that for the minutes, please? All right. Would anybody like to make a?
I'd like to move to nominate Joe Demora for the chair of the committee.
I'll second that.
Usually we ask if there's any discussion.
You want to ask if there's a discussion item?
Yeah. Is there any discussion on this? Okay. And so all those in favor?
I. I'll abstain. So it's recorded.
All right. Very good.
Thank you for your vote of confidence.
For sure.
So we've organized the committee. Let's evaluate the next item. I'm sorry. Let's go to the next item on the agenda. I'm very proud to say, as I mentioned in an email today when we provided some of this information, that we are, I feel that we are very much a high-performance consensus-driven committee. And consensus is a very powerful way of making decisions with a minimal amount of meetings. But that's not the important thing. But also votes. Sometimes a lot of voting means that there's some contention. And I think we're all moving in the same direction. So Alyssa, for example, and Jen really helped form an idea that I didn't even think of, that this committee should not go very far in what to study until we know what the people want. And so Alyssa, could you tell us, Agenda Number Two, evaluate revised changes of the select board? I'm going to do that in a moment. I have a question. When is your survey scheduled?
Yeah, so I am compiling it now to present to the COA board, and our meeting is next Wednesday.
Oh, good.
And so we'll go ahead and review and confirm, and then we'll launch it definitely by Groveland Day, September 6th.
By Groveland Day. That was your goal, yeah.
Not launched before. Yep.
Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you. We're going to get back to that in a minute. So the second agenda item is what happened at the select board meeting last week. Basically, we recruited ourselves, the five of us, and then we also got a nod yes that Steve Baker from the select board was willing to serve. And Ed Watson was willing to serve. But the town council notified Rebecca and Jason, our chair, select board chair, that in order for select board members to serve on this particular committee, the charge would have to be changed to include them. And the select board indicated in their meeting that they were very comfortable with the five of us, and they're willing to share, to change the charge. So we're it. So this is the committee. The third agenda item is review of council on aging survey. And I'll ask Alyssa if she could just make a presentation to all of us and to the public. As Alyssa just alerted us, there is a council of aging survey that encompasses a bunch of questions having to do with issues related to the population that is served by the council on aging. She has also decided to embed in the survey questions related to our work here. And the work is, should we or should we not do electronic voting? And should we and should we not consider Saturday meetings? So Alyssa, you're on the floor.
Yeah, absolutely. So Jen, again, just reiterating, I'm not reviewing the COA survey tonight, but we'll do so at the COA board meeting next Wednesday, 9:30 a.m. You know, as Joe just spoke, that, you know, the plan would be to, you know, exactly as he said, embed these exact questions as we decide and confirm on tonight into the COA survey. So, you know, last week, you know, working off your initial document, Joe, I sort of put together the survey that we have, well, that we shared last week. And then from the feedback that we talked about, I tried to implement it here. It didn't make it, last week it was a nice one page. With the edits, now it's two pages, you know. But we, I put a little blurb up in front about what we're doing. But again, this is just from my perspective, so happy to edit and finalize it after tonight. So in the beginning, it just says, this town is gathering, this town, the town, is gathering community feedback on town meeting format, timing, and voting methods. Your responses will help us understand preferences and identify ways to make town meeting more accessible and welcoming for all residents. Thank you for taking a few minutes to share your input. I don't know if you wanted to name the study group or anything like that, or if we want to go one by one and talk about edits to finalize.
Jen, your opinion? That's a question. How do you feel about it?
I sort of feel that less is more. I mean, it is, at the end of the day, it is the town that is, you know, gathering the community feedback. If, you know, to refer to ourselves in there, I feel like it's going to start to get a lot of words.
Too much.
It's not a short title that we have. You know, I think it's fair to just say that the town is gathering community feedback. I mean, you could say via a committee, or, you know, if you wanted to add that, but I don't think it's that important.
What's your feeling, Patrick? Thank you, Jen.
I am inclined to agree. You know, just looking at this, it looks great. I mean, it takes into account the things we discussed last time, and, you know, I think it's as concise as it needs to be. So it's a little more of a CV than a resume, but it's still, it's still a quick checkbox kind of, kind of thing, and it'll be easy for people to get through. So I think this is a perfect format. I wouldn't make any changes to it at this point.
Amelia, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, I think the same. I don't think there's a need to have our particular committee name on it. Yeah, I agree.
Well, Emilio, I'm relieved that you didn't go against two strong women and an attorney.
Hey, everybody's voice is equal in this, on this board. And nobody should be, nobody should feel that they should not have a complete and total 20% of this board.
Well, I appreciate your comments. I didn't give it much thought. I didn't give it any thought, so I totally agree with all of you. So thank you, Alyssa. That's.
Do you want to, do you want to take a vote to say that this is the, this is the survey that we want to use?
So why don't we read it a little bit together? And I'm going to read it out for the public as well. Let's read it one more time. I know Emilio had some thoughts. This is a wonderful, my opinion, this is really expanded from what we saw last week, but just enough and not too much. So let me read it to you. Section one, about your town meeting participation, there's one question. Have you attended a town meeting in the last three years? Yes or no, you check off a box. If you selected no, you're welcome to share why you haven't attended. Optional, so people can write in. That's, that's great. Section two.
Can I, I just want to pause there. So I think this, you know, was taken from your original survey. I don't know if it's, I just put it out there. I don't, it's interesting question. I don't know if it's a needed question. I'd be curious to hear.
Jen, how do you feel about that?
Which part? The if you selected no, you're welcome to share?
No, just the first question, the whole question.
Um.
Because what would we learn?
I think it is, well, I mean, we already know, right? We already know that on average, what, 100, 150 people come to town meeting? And in a town of over 5,000 voters, that's a, you know, pretty low percentage. But I don't know. I feel like it's helpful to have that information.
I think so, too. I think that if you've, if you've been to a town meeting, then you know how it's gone. And so when you're looking at the other responses, you're looking through, through a framework of, okay, this is somebody who's, who's already, you know, seen how it works and has some different ideas. And somebody who's not, maybe hasn't even seen how it goes. So you, you might want to give, you know, well, also, we're trying to increase, the whole point of this is to increase attendance. So finding out what the no people are thinking and finding out what the yes people are thinking are, I think they're both important. And to be able to distinguish, okay, who's a no and who's a yes, like, are the yes people saying the same kinds of things, no people saying the same kinds of things? So I do think that there's a, there's a, there's data for Emilio to distill here. And so I don't think, I don't think it's a wasted question.
Okay. I just wanted to double check.
I agree with that. I would, you know, so have you attended in the last three years is a good delineation. We could even, if we were to swap the, basically swap the question around and say, when, you know, when was the last town meeting that you joined and have, you know, time frames, never three to five years last year, kind of thing? Then you can have even another layer that, because some, maybe there's a select group of folks that have never joined a town meeting, right? Versus one that.
I will say that we are at two full pages right now.
Oh, no. I don't think we add.
Right. And also, it's repeated on section three as well. So have you attended a town meeting?
Oh, okay. Then that would give us room. We'll cross that out.
You could remove a question and just alter this question to have that, or the three years works, too.
Oh, okay. You're right.
Yeah, that was.
Right. I mean, yeah, that's a good point. So you could just take out section one if you wanted to.
No, well, I mean, so here's why that happened, is that I sort of rearranged it to sort of be big, broader than narrowed down to the service. So in my mind, it made sense, hey, when's the last time you've attended?
Sure.
All right, now what day, now what kind of device? So how would you like it to read, then? Have you attended a town meeting last, what would you like?
I mean, it's up to you guys. We could, the last three years is a good delineation, because it's so long that does it, you know, that's probably indicative already.
Yeah.
Or you could have it read something like, when was the last time you attended a town meeting? And then just have the checkboxes for the, the time ranges below.
I wonder if we'll start them out on the defensive, though? If you've got some, when was the last time you came to town meeting?
Touche.
Right?
Yeah.
I don't know if that sounds like, if it puts them on edge a little.
Well, even the three years, like, have you done this in the last three years? It's lacking.
Like, from Blimpview, I would say, like, this is a good effort, you know? And I wouldn't want to spend, you know, a ton of time gilding the lily here. I think, you know, this is, this is fine, the way it is. Like, if we, if we change a question, the idea is you want to have it released for Groveland Day. And so, like, I think that is a good, that's, that's the right ambition for, you know, our information as well. So, I mean, you know, like, if it is a little redundant, it's two pages and most of its checkbox.
Oh, yeah. No, I know.
It's a pretty easy survey, as far as to go.
Yeah.
And having the, the section, the open section there is kind of nice, because we can find out, especially for the people that have strong opinions in that and why not. We'll be able to find those out, too.
All right. So no edits on that first question, then?
No, I think it's fine.
I wouldn't.
Okay.
So are we leaving it as is?
Leaving that first question as is.
We good? So by, without a vote?
Well, we could vote on the whole.
Yeah, we will afterwards. I'll wrap that up in a, in a suggested, what do you call the word? Been a long day at work. So by consensus, we're going to leave that alone. And then when I, a motion, I'll suggest a motion to wrap it all up afterwards. Okay, good. That's good discussion. Anything else on that matter?
Nope.
All right. So let me continue reading again for the public's benefit, because they don't have the document in front of them like we do. Section two, so section one was about your town meeting participation. Have you attended a town meeting in the last three years? Yes or no? And if no, why? Why not? Section two, town meeting day and time preferences. And there are five questions. Question number one, and what this says is, we'd like your opinion on when town meeting is held to help us understand what works best for the community. Number one, would you prefer a town meeting to be held on a weeknight, which is the current format, on a Saturday? Or you can check off a third box that says no preference. Question number two, if town meeting were held on a Saturday, how would it affect your likelihood of attending? Four choices. I would be more likely to attend, I would be less likely to attend, it would not affect my attendance, not sure. Question number three, if Saturday meetings were adopted, which time slot would you most prefer? The following five choices, 11 to 2, check off a box, or 12 to 3, check off a box, or 1 to 4, check off a box, or 2 to 5, check off a box, or no preference. Question number four, if town meeting is currently held on the last, I'm sorry, town meeting is currently held on the last Monday in April, if the start time were changed, which time slot would you most prefer? 5 to 8, 5:30 to 8:30, 6 to 9, 6:30 to 9:30, no preference? Thank you. That's brilliant. I never thought of that. You know, we're kind of stressing out, people are not able to come to the meeting, because it's a weeknight, we're assuming, but maybe if we start at 5 instead of 7, could make a difference.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Town meeting is currently held on last Monday in April. We go from, so which one would you prefer? 5 to 8, 5:30 to 8:30, 6 to 9, 6:30 to 9:30? Or no preference? Number five, thank you for this as well, Alyssa. If childcare were offered during town meeting, how would it affect your likelihood of attending? Child hair, childcare. Number one, I would be more likely to attend. Number two, I would not, it would not affect my attendance. Number three, not sure.
And then we'll cross that out.
The 6:30.
That's just.
That's the amended.
Just checking to see if everybody's awake.
Right.
6:30 to 9:30, we leave that in there?
No.
That's going to come up.
Okay? And not applicable, we'll leave that. All right. So if childcare were offered during town meeting, how would it affect your likelihood of attending? I would be more likely to attend, it would not affect my attendance. By consensus, we've amended it to eliminate not sure. By consensus, we've eliminated 6:30 to 9:30. Is that correct? Do I have that right?
I thought we just, just got rid of 6:30 and 9:30.
I'm sorry?
I thought we just got rid of the, the time slot.
Yeah, we did.
Not the other pieces.
Yeah, I thought the not sure and the not applicable were staying.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got it wrong. So all right, let me, let me repeat that.
Yep.
I would be more likely to attend. We're all agreement there. It would not affect my attendance, if we had childcare. We're going to keep not sure. We're going to eliminate 6:30 to 9:30.
Right.
That's the amended version.
And we're going to keep not applicable.
And we're going to keep not applicable. Okay. So the amendment by consensus is eliminate 6:30 to 9:30. We're good. We don't have to vote. I'll wrap that up in the motion. All right. Very good. Section three, last section on the survey, this is the council on aging survey, not a townwide survey, even though it certainly covers a wide swath of our community. Voting method, section three, voting method. The town is exploring whether to adopt electronic voting devices, clickers, for the town meeting. Your input is helpful as we consider options. Number one, four questions. Number one, have you attended a town meeting in the last three years?
So do we want to take that out?
Oh, yep.
Because that's duplicated to one.
Yes. This is why it was labeled draft.
No, no, but we're amending it. It's fine.
No, it's great, it's great.
We're amending it.
We're, we're shortening it, which is good.
Yes. That's great. My concern's gone.
All good. You're fine.
I don't know where we would be if we didn't have this from the beginning.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
All right. So number, question number one, because we knocked off question number one. Question number one is going to be, would you feel comfortable using a handheld electronic voting device? Yes, no, not sure? Question number two, do you have a preference for how votes are taken at town meeting? Here are the choices. Number one, electronic voting, handheld device. Number two, voice vote, which is the current method. Number three, interesting concept, how about instead of voice vote or instead of electronic voting, number three says, raise of hands with a count.
Which is what we do when they're, when the voice vote is, sounds kind of close.
Ah, good point. And then the last choice is no preference. All right. The last question on section three, voting method. If electronic voting were introduced at town meeting, how would it affect your likelihood of attending? Here are the choices, four of them. I would be more likely to attend, I would be less likely to attend, it would not affect my attendance, not sure. And then the last piece of this survey is optional open comments. Do you have any comments about town meeting format or accessibility you'd like to share? So I've, I have a question. I've participated in numerous surveys through my company as a financial advisor, through community initiatives. Are comments, are comments actionable? Like, can they really help form public policy?
I think if you see a trend, absolutely.
If you see a trend? And how do you track a trend?
That's Amelia's job.
All right. Amelia, how do you track its comments?
It's qualitative data. So it's quantitative, you can get numbers from all of this and crunch and figure out, this is what the public generally likes. 70% of them likes 5:30 to 8:30 on weekdays, right? But with the qualitative data like that, that's more open-ended, we can find out if, you know, six people give us comments, and five of them are, I, you know, haven't attended because it's, you know, whatever XYZ thing, right? Now we have a trend that, you know, from qualitative data, that everyone said the same thing. We're in the same vein. So we can kind of categorize it when it comes in.
Well, and to Jen's point, you know, it's, it's, whenever you open, open it up to let people speak, it's less adversarial, right?
Right.
So if they want to say something, at least there's, there's an opportunity. Oh, I wanted to, I want to get this information in front of the, you know, the committee. So I, I don't think that there's any harm to having it, and there could be at least a couple ways it could be helpful.
It may, it may bring something to light that we didn't even think of.
Exactly.
Right. I mean, something, so, you know, we talked at our last meeting about, did we, I think we talked about the idea, there's a couple towns in Massachusetts that are going towards the remote option. Well, if we got 150 people saying, when can we have remote meetings? Well, that would certainly be some information that we would want to have. I don't, I'm not saying that I think that's the case. But I mean, who would have even thought that until you see it, you know?
Yeah.
And just for a point of order, clarification for the public, everybody on the committee knows this, remote voting is not electronic voting. Electronic voting is having a device at the meeting. Remote voting is when you can participate in a public meeting from your home. And that is not part of our charge. I didn't ask for it with the select board. There is an interest in exploring that. There is a significant initiative in the state of Massachusetts to make that law. I theoretically support that. Conceptually, I support that very strongly, but I feel very strongly, is my only opinion tonight, I think, should be, that it, we have to walk before we can run. And anybody, any town or city that is contemplating remote voting has already gotten really comfortable with electronic voting. So that's not part of our agenda. I asked the select board, even though there seemed to be some interest with some members, not to include that in our charge. We're going to stick with two things only. Saturday, yes or no? Clickers, yes or no? Maybe we'll come back next year and delve into remote voting.
And that's the kind of thing that could be in the open-ended comments. You know, we could get an information about, okay, you know, in 2026 and 2027, you know, maybe we'll want a different charge to talk about some different things. So again, it guides where we go.
Our work will continue.
Sure.
Then our charge, you know, committee will continue. So, you know, that's a, I really like this, because, you know, we could get 20, 30, 40 comments that say, yeah, I love, I would love childcare, even though they answered the question. Or something that's not even on the survey. I would be able to come if you can give me a ride.
I wondered about the transportation piece. Were you going to put that on there for the, the council on aging folks, or no?
Um, I mean, we already want it.
You do.
Be known that we can do that.
You can compare to town meeting. Okay. Okay. But again, yeah, that could be something that more people indicate.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any further comment on this?
I think it's great. With, with the revisions, I think it's perfect.
I really appreciate all of you for some good thoughts here. So let me make, someone needs to make a motion. I don't want to be the person.
I'll move to approve, to approve the survey as, as amended.
As amended, correct. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Any, any.
Oh, any discussion, sorry.
Okay. Any further, any further comments or questions?
Just a comment is that you, you've mentioned a couple times that this is the COA survey, so it's not the COA survey. This is being put on to the COA survey.
Right. It's a piece of.
Yeah.
Right.
Is this, this is the same and would serve as the townwide survey? Is that correct?
So I was, I mean, this was just this group survey, right?
Yes. That's my assumption.
I think it's going to be townwide, yeah.
And you're going to use this piece as part of your, you've got a couple other pages and questions for
Right. Okay, so the council on, so the survey, in a way, is being sponsored by the Council of Aging, but it's for everybody?
No.
No, okay.
Well, the Council on Aging has a survey that you are sending out anyways.
To our older adults, huh?
And then, and then this survey would be a sub-portion of that survey.
Yes.
But there, but there's nothing preventing us from using this as the be-all, end-all
Well, that's, that's, I mean, for you, for this committee, this is it.
Yeah, right.
You don't have any copyright on it.
No. But I just wanted to clarify, because I was
We have a lawyer.
Mentioned a couple of times, yeah, that, that it was a COA survey.
We also have town council.
Any, any further comments or possible amendments to the survey as amended by consensus? We have a motion on the floor.
So I would just clear, I would just clarify that it would be my understanding that we would use this as a townwide survey for the purposes of what we're trying to accomplish here. So that, with the understanding of that, I would move to have it approved with the amendments for that purpose.
All right, Amelia, can you capture that in the minutes? It's, you know, not tonight, but right now, but
From the recording?
Yes, I will.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the suggested survey questions by Alyssa. These, it's a long motion. These questions are part of the Council on Aging survey that is being implemented the next couple of weeks. And the, the survey questions were amended by consensus, and that's what we're voting for. That's the motion. We've had a discussion. Alyssa, how do you vote? For or against?
For.
Jen, how do you vote? For or against?
Vote for.
Patrick, how do you vote? For or against?
For.
Amelia, how do you vote? For or against?
For.
And I'm for it, so it passes unanimously. Our second vote as a committee, congratulations.
Thanks, Alyssa, for the work on that.
Thank you for giving the edits.
It was super, super helpful. Yeah, Amelia, great job, also.
So, well, actually, I'm gonna bring that out, I'm gonna bring that out when we talk about who does what. I have an idea. I'm gonna ask Alyssa a question, I'll, I'll wait till that part of the agenda. So agenda number four is develop and finalize questions for a townwide survey.
Done.
That's what we just did.
So can I have a motion that we would, we as a committee would like to implement a townwide survey? And the motion is that we would like to vote on the survey questions as amended by consensus also for the town, in other words, adopt exactly what we just approved.
I think that's what we just, I think that's what we just did. I mean, I think we just had that vote.
Well, that was the, well, that was the vote on the previous agenda, so.
No, what I, what I mean is, it was the vote to adopt the survey as amended
Okay, you're, you're actually, you're, you're correct, so we're, we're done.
So then we're good with that.
Yeah, we're done with that.
Including for the use of Council on Aging survey.
Well, right, well, we don't speak for the Council of Aging, so.
Okay, and that's, and that's why I, in the, in the next agenda item, the next agenda item is allocate homework assignments to each individual member, or members can decide what their homework assignment is. So
While we're talking about homework, can I jump in and tell you what I did about the homework that you assigned last time?
Yep, yep, just, yep, just, just let me presage that a little bit
Yeah, sure.
If you don't mind.
No, of course.
So if we do our own homework, what I, what I would ask the committee members to do is to send me something, especially if it's typed out. Let's say that there are five chapters in this report that we're gonna present to the Board of Selectmen. Could you write a draft of your chapter? So here's what I'd like to do, I'd like to make a contribution, I need to do something here. So my contribution is I would like to interview town managers and administrators who have implemented Saturday meetings and electronic voting. That, that's, I want to write a report, I want to make some phone calls, interview people on the phone, pros, cons, pick up as much information as possible, and I write, I'll write up a chapter. And when I have that chapter done, I'm gonna email it to you. And when I, you get an email from me and it's gonna say, for informational purposes only, that means don't comment, just read it, because we don't want to violate open meeting law. Just comment, make notes, if you have questions, concerns, that's when you bring it to our next meeting in November. That's my homework assignment, and that's it. So Patrick, what would you like to do?
So, well, I want to first go in, into what I was asked to do last time. And what I thought the best way to sort of come to this meeting was to say, okay, what is the current status of things? And so what I did was I printed up copies of the bylaw for the town meeting, and I have one for each of you. And so anything that we recommend and is approved by the select board will have to go to town meeting to be approved, so
Interesting.
You know, so the fir, so the first thing is, well, what are, what are our current requirements, right? And it's, it's a pretty short section, and I think for the, for the public, first of all, the bylaws are on the website. If you scroll over to government, I think it is, there's a drop-down menu and it has, it has bylaws on it, and you can just click right on it, gives you, gives you a table of contents, and you can scroll to where you like to go. But I printed out chapter 161, which is about town meetings, and, and I'll just briefly, if nobody minds, read it in so that everybody can hear what, what the current rules are per our town. And there may be some additional rules, but, you know, this, it's the easiest place to start. These are the things that we would have to change, and whether we can or we can't, that's a different rules question, but we have to know what rules we're playing by before we can decide what things we want to change.
So a point of clarification.
Sure.
We operate by state laws and statutes and rules, or if we, we can cancel those, and relying on those, we craft and work, and, and rely on our own past bylaws.
No, that is, that's, that's a little, it's a little different than that.
Okay.
So we're subject to state laws, we're required to comply with the state laws, and so anything that's a statute that says you have to do XYZ, we have to do those things. We additionally have another layer of, think of it as the state sets a floor and the town sets a ceiling, okay? As far as what we have to do and what rules there are and things like that. So in supplementing what the state says we have to do, we may have some additional things that we've decided as a town that we want to do. Some of the, some of the things match up with what the state says, so everything, you know, lines up, but there are some additional things that are not required by the state laws that we have in our bylaws. So, but we certainly have to comply with our bylaws. So that's, that's like the first place, but the, the state takes precedence over, over our, our bylaws. If our bylaws are wrong, then, you know, we have to still comply with the state laws, no matter what, you know, happens there. So with that in mind, unless, and somebody has opposition to it, I would like to read in chapter 161, Town Meetings. It is broken into six sections. The first section is notice. Every town note, every town meeting shall be noticed, notified by posting copies of the warrant calling the same in not less than three public places in the town 14 days at least before the date appointed for said meeting. One of said copies to be pointed, posted in that part of town known as Saveryville, one in that part of town known as The Village, and one in that part of town known as South Groveland. 161.2 is the date of the annual town meeting and election. This is, this is important, this is when we have our town meeting and it's required currently. The annual town meeting shall be held, not May, shall be held on the last Monday of April each year, and the annual meeting for election of officers and any referendum questions shall be held on the first Monday of May each year. So right now, we're beholden to the last Monday of April, okay? So if we want to change that, we would have to change the bylaw, that would have to be something that goes to town meeting and gets approved by the people that show at that town. 161.3, criteria for admissions to meetings, location. A, the checklist of registered voters shall be used for admission to every special and annual town meeting, and the money is necessary to pay for the, pay the checkers shall be taken from the election and registration account. B, no person not listed on the checklist of registered voters shall be admitted to the hall wherein the town meeting is being held, except as approved by the meeting, and the moderator shall determine the bounds of the hall. The warrant for an annual or special town meeting may specify that the meeting is to be held at a suitable auditorium or other facility in any of the contiguous towns or city. So one of the things that I see when I see B is this sounds to me like you can't bring your kids with you, right? Registered voters, registered voters are the only people that can be in the space. So for example, you know, your kids wouldn't be registered voters unless they're, unless they're independently registered voters.
I think how it's I mean, good point, but I'm just thinking about when they did childcare, you know, a couple of years ago for, when we were looking at the override, that it was like in a separate location.
Right, sure. 161.4, quorum, a quorum at any annual or special town meeting shall consist of not less than 100 legal voters of the town. Anyone who went there two years, went to town meeting two years ago knows that we were right on the borderline and had to wait a little bit to make sure we got person number 100 in.
So these are state laws?
These are town laws.
Oh, these are town
Town requirements. This is all from the Groveland by, town bylaws. 161.5, rules of conduct, conduct and procedure. Town meetings shall be conducted in accordance with the rules of parliamentary practice as set forth in, quote, "town meeting time by Richard B. Johnson, Benjamin A. Trustman, and Charles Y. Wadsworth. On matters requiring two-thirds vote of town meeting by statute, account need not be taken unless the vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, as provided in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 15." 161.6, voting, this is another one where this is interesting. Voting by town meeting members shall, at the discretion of the moderator, one, utilize electronic voting technology when available, or, two, be by a show of hands, or, three, by me, be by other means as authorized by the moderator and approved by two-thirds of the town meeting members present and voting, or for, be as herein after provided. So they left space for, and whatever other stuff we decide later. B, upon motion affirmingly voted by two-thirds of the town meeting members present, voting a vote shall be taken by secret ballot. So what this says to me is voting, electronic technology is authorized by the bylaws of the town, and currently, as long as the moderator wants to, and the technology is available, it sounds as if even the very next town meeting in 2026, we could use voting technology. So long as the bylaw doesn't conflict with any state rule, which I'm not aware that it does. So that's an interesting thing, and so why we look to what we can do now as a sort of starting point, in the same way that the survey focuses our intention, this, this focuses our attention on if we make recommendations, what are we recommending to change? So part of the recommendation of this committee is probably gonna be to amend the bylaws in some ways, and to not in others. And, you know, to know that, hey, the moderator, for example, has power that maybe the moderator didn't know yet. So, so I think this is helpful, and again, for everybody out there, this is on the website, you can find it yourself, really easy, and they've done a good job of setting it up so it's, it's user-friendly.
So if you can write an executive summary, about 250, 300 words, to attach to this, and you can describe that this chapter
Sure.
You wrote is this, and explain just what you explained.
Well, this isn't my, this is the, this is the town bylaw.
No, no, I understand.
This isn't my
But if you write an executive summary
Sure, of course.
To explain how that comes together, just like you explained it to us now.
Of course.
So if you, in a word, in a way, if you can capture what is on the recording
Sure.
In a written format, what I would call an executive summary, that will be the chapter
Okay.
That you write.
Okay.
So Alyssa has done her homework, so I, I don't know if you have some thoughts and any further contribution, because I have an ask, I have a, I'm gonna ask you to consider something, but any other thoughts before I ask?
I'm curious what you're gonna ask.
Right, yeah.
So here's my ask, and we can do this by consensus. I, I feel, we've, we've decided as a committee to adopt the same survey, but I would ask Alyssa to produce at that November meeting, or sooner, much sooner, with a no information, for informational purposes only email, here are the results of the, of the survey. If you can give us the results, and then we can talk about
Her piece.
Yeah, from, from, from the results of your survey that you're gonna conduct. I think that then we can decide November 1st, based on the results, whether we want to move forward with a townwide survey. I feel like I want to see what happens with that survey before we roll it out. That's just my idea.
Yeah, I would, but that's only, but you'd only
We may want to make some changes.
But you'd only have the voice of older adults.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would
So how do you feel about, should we be rolling out a townwide survey simultaneously?
At Groveland Day, it sounds like the perfect idea, because it's when people are out. So I think, I think
You guys are very serious people, I'll tell you.
We're high-performance.
You, yeah.
High-performance.
You've already, you've already given us the plaudits, we gotta earn them now.
So I will, and absolutely, so the, again, this is not the COA survey. I, I created this as the, the town study survey, and then the COA would be happy to help collect responses by putting it on to the COA survey. So, so that's again, sort of how I'm seeing it. The, the town survey, you know, as I've told their town administrator, well, you know, it's not only COA services that we're thinking about, we are thinking about how do we age in, in, in the town of Groveland, and so that means, you know, what do our sidewalks look like, you know, what do our recreation places look like, how are the, you know, whole spectrum of services? So that will be shared as a public document to town administrators and others who would like it.
So, so can we, can we ask you to roll out a townwide survey?
I, I think it will, will need to be multi-pronged, so again
I think Ann can give a hand on that.
I don't know.
She said that she
Annie?
Annie.
Oh, Annie, I'm sorry, Annie. Oh, I, yeah.
Yeah, so I will definitely, you know, commit to putting it on, on the COA survey. Again, we have about 2,000 older adults, and we'll see what we can get. You know, happy to, to make a Google form, you know, it's easy enough since I already have it, to, to put it out there and give access to people that, you know, that need it. That's what I would be willing to commit to, but I think it will take many people to push it out.
And get the data back and, and then, and then get that into a format, yeah.
So we're thinking a Google survey?
And the, or, people have other options, I mean, Google's easy enough.
Yeah, it is, it is.
And my, the COA survey, again, will be many, you know, meeting people where they are, so we will have it as a hard copy, and I would suggest that we too have a hard copy, you know?
You're gonna mail them too?
Sort of as our last, as our last resort
Yeah, sure.
For any stragglers, yeah.
Who's gonna tabulate all the results?
For, for my, for the COA survey, that will be me as director.
It's gonna be you?
Yeah. Unless Amelia wants to volunteer for us.
Sounds like something you might like to do.
Yeah.
Town tabulator.
Well, well, you're gonna be tabulating those open questions.
But I mean, yeah, so for this, you know, I can easily pull, you know, if we're doing a Google survey, which I'll also do for the COA, I can easily, like, cut that information out and, you know, send it over to be part of the
So are we gonna end up with two surveys, townwide and then COA?
Yes, in short.
Right, think of, think of the survey as being townwide, and for the people that are being targeted by the COA, it's just gonna be a den, an addendum to the thing that they're already doing.
Yeah.
So it's, so everybody's gonna get it, so it is townwide.
Yep.
But Alyssa's gonna handle the pocket of that, that is the, you know, the older
Sixty-plus.
Older folks in, in town.
Yep.
And get that information over to, it sounds like Amelia.
So who's gonna implement the townwide?
So I guess somebody should reach out to Rebecca and Annie's office to see about how, how they want it, how the, how the format that the survey should take, whether it be, you know, online, whether it be, you know, have some booth have the survey for people when they come around to Groveland Day, like, I think it would be in multiple forms.
So I did just speak with Rebecca, because I'm gonna be at the town of Groveland booth on, at Groveland Day, and I double-checked with her because, you know, this is, while this is a townwide project, I think the directive was pretty, pretty clear that we are, it's, we're doing the work, that Annie and Rebecca are not involved in this part of the project. But I asked if she would be okay with me having the survey there at that table, I'm also gonna have voter registration things and things like that, and Rebecca said absolutely.
And they're certainly okay with putting it on the Groveland website.
Exactly, we can put it on the website, where that can go out onto the face. It'll be a Google, it'll be a Google
Yeah, I mean, that's what the town has used for, for their others, right?
So we can put it out on the social media, on the website, and Rebecca thought that we could even maybe have a laptop there at the, at the
Groveland Day.
Yes, at the thing, so people could just enter it right there.
Nice.
So, we can sort of work towards that, and I'm happy to work on that piece of it.
Okay, so I appreciate it. So that was my ask, I thought we were gonna do this in November, but I guess we're gonna do it now.
Yeah, I think
Right, because we can't, because your, your point is really well-taken, that we can't really make recommendations until we know what the people want.
Right.
And so delaying getting the information about what we want just delays our ability to respond to it.
I mean, I'm still gonna do my homework, I'm gonna get on the phone and ask those questions, but we might say, you know what? The surveys are very clear, people don't want to change a thing. Then I'm gonna go to the select board, say to the select board and say we're done.
Well, I mean, but you'll also.
I mean, I don't think that'll happen, but.
The information doesn't just, the information just, just doesn't go away, you know, like, it's not that the work that you'll have done will have been in vain.
No, of course.
It's helpful, and it's, it's, it's helpful, even if it's not going to be immediately you, you know, like, like, okay, well, the, the data says that people don't want this now, that doesn't mean that in three years that won't, that, that won't change. So, it's helpful, it'll be helpful to know what everybody else does, and what has been good and what has been not good, you know, so we can kind of, you know, step, step smartly.
So, I have a recommendation, and, and an ask for Jen. Jen has already attended a meeting and has collected information about the clickers. Can you forward it to me, Patrick, and Emilio for us to do a little, so we can study it? And Emilio's only, I mean, he can certainly participate in any want, any way that he wants, but maybe he can give us a little bit of insight about the technology.
I don't know why I have to leave Alyssa out of it.
I know.
Yeah, I know why I have to leave Alyssa out.
No, no, Alyssa.
She can give the email too.
Email it to everyone. I just don't want to put more work on it. Alyssa, she's got plenty going, like, hey, Alyssa, can you evaluate the tech, why don't we ma, mail it to everyone, and someone, someone produce an executive summary of their opinion about, you know, what they see and what it costs and how, all of that.
I can take that executive.
I don't want to just burden anybody. Okay, if you don't mind. Me, I'm a technophobe, you're not getting any email from me about any opinion about how this stuff works. All I know is I have to implement it, and I'm already shaking in my boots.
And for what it's worth, I also have surveys from several other towns in Massachusetts who have adopted the electronic voting, which company they've gone with, what they like, what they didn't like, so I can also share that.
People will be really interested about the cost and that thing, that.
Yes, exactly, because even though, so our bylaws say that the moderator can choose the, the, the method that we.
If available, I believe it's.
But, without having the equipment.
Then it's not available.
It's not available, exactly.
Right.
So it may possibly be that the recommendation would be that the town found, finds a way to financially, you know, invest in this option.
Sure. Remember that?
If it increases.
What's that?
Increases the, the attendance, yeah, that makes sense.
Looks like it would, right.
Right. All right, so we're set on the homework assignment, so Alyssa will implement and report the Council on Aging survey. Jen will lead the effort to implement a townwide survey by Groveland Day, God bless us. I'm gonna interview people that have implemented Saturdays and electronic voting. Patrick will write an executive summary to attach and clarify the legal aspects on how to implement this, which is largely through bylaw, and thank you, I had no idea that the town moderator has the authority right now to just say, let's just go with voting technology. I won't do that, that's why I want the study committee, I'm, 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 I'm not that courageous, I really want to make sure this stuff is gonna work. Last thing I want to do is, under my watch, implement something that will cause nobody to show up at the meeting. However, what is intriguing is we do have control over the bylaw, we can just say, we only need 50 people to have quorum.
Well, we also have to comply with the state requirements, and I'm pretty sure that the.
And we don't want to go that.
100 is a, is a statewide.
Probably, yeah.
It also has to be in like, March, April, or May, I think, there's some, there's some things about that as well.
We want to go in the other direction. And then Emilio will evaluate the technology, but also help tabulate results of the survey, and provide the qualitative leanings, and the, you know, that we can, you know, delineate from the written comments, is that right? Does that sound right?
Yeah, can.
Did I capture all the assignments properly?
A thought for when the, the survey does come back, especially with all the physical ones, how, how do committees typically go about physically going and, and maybe digitally entering all of that?
So, I mean, I can offer, for my practice, I have a digital scanner, it's very, very good, it would, I could certainly scan in all the information and send it over to you.
So we'd still have to put it in, I mean.
You would still, you would have to enter, you'd have to enter the data.
Right.
But I would be able to get you a PDF of all the surveys, so that you would have, you would be able to use it, you know, electronically, if that's better.
I, I wonder if, depending on how many we get, if, and maybe we split it between all five of us, and, and then we can just. Enter it into the Google form.
Get those in on time.
Well, and the ones.
If you're overwhelmed, why don't you do what Alyssa says, just send us a batch each?
Right, right, so that is, yeah, yeah, depending on how many there are, if it's a few hundred, it's not that big of a deal, if it's thousands, then it will change quickly.
Is there a thought as to a deadline? To stop collecting the data and to start compiling?
Well.
October 15th, or?
Well, so, Joe has proposed a November meeting, so by November, we should probably have, we should probably understand what the, what the town wants. And so, I would say that, you know, in advance of that meeting, the data should be compiled and put together.
Like, three weeks before, a month before?
When is Pumpkin Fest, do you know?
Oh, Octo, Wednesday, the 22nd, rain date, the 29th. Yeah, so, that may be on the outer edge.
It's a smart thought, but that's probably too close to the meeting to call it.
When in November are you thinking, what was your mental?
So maybe, you brought up a really good point, I mean, we can collect data for 100 years, and people, and stuff can trickle in. Hopefully, hopefully, we will have a critical mass of actionable data by November 1st. We can set that as a deadline, we can share that with each other.
When is the meeting, again?
And then the meeting, you know, I, let's do that by consensus, I, I'm looking at, you know, certainly, maybe the, maybe the 19th, just before Thanksgiving? Like, go a little bit late, like, if we have a cutoff of November 1st, we can still have that residual energy of finalizing the incoming and the collected surveys. And give us a little bit of breathing room while we're, you know, busy with holidays and families and work, just before Thanksgiving, to have that last meeting in 2025, that's November 19th.
That would also allow for people to make, to submit surveys at Pumpkin Fest, and we could call, we could add those into what we get, because certainly by the time.
Thunder.
Certainly by, you know, between then and the 19th, there'd be enough time to call together what came just from the Pumpkin Fest.
So if we say, like, end of October?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's enough time, that gives you three weeks, Emilio.
Yeah.
To math the math, is that enough time?
To, to put everything in by a group effort if needed, and then.
Yeah, okay.
We can, I think that's doable.
Okay.
Awesome.
And it's good to capture Pumpkin Fest.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really smart.
Generated data.
Right, because it's another place where people will congregate, and maybe, oh, you didn't, I didn't see there was a survey of Gro, of Groveland Day, I happened, had to be out of town, or whatever.
Do you keep surveys here, like, in the different offices as well?
Oh, physically, as in physically to fill. So are we gonna also do paper ones?
Yes. That's how we're, we're dividing and.
Okay, 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 there we go.
Although hopefully most do online.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that there's any rules that say we can't.
Yeah, no, I know for the trash survey, for example, we've, you know, the COA office has had some, we do have town greeters here on, in town hall on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so they often, you know, can have the, the surveys and can pass it out too, so, you know, putting them at the water department, the electric office as well, good to have surveys there, or a sign at least.
Where would we return them?
Can put boxes around, or we could, I mean, say drop them at the town clerk's office, I.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, you would, you have an in with the town clerk.
I mean, I'm here, yeah, I can ask her.
I bet.
Yeah, I mean.
I bet she's amenable.
Right, we can, you know, I'm happy to just say, bring your, bring your completed survey to the clerk's office, or they can put it in an envelope and leave it right in the box out there, and, you know.
Yeah, I think either clerk or COA, wherever people.
Yeah.
Yep.
That sounds good, is the, is the 19th good for everybody? Same, same time?
Everybody okay?
Right now, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good also.
Thank you, we'll do that, 19, 5:30 to 6:30.
Sounds good.
All right, in the interest of time, let me just repeat for the public, our agenda items tonight, those completed, number one, organize the committee, we did that, evaluate revised change, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, evaluate the revised charge from the select board meeting, we did that, review of council on aging survey, we did that, finalize the townwide survey questions, we did that, we allocated homework, we scheduled a meeting, the last item on the agenda is discussion and appointment by consensus, well, actually, we should do that by vote, writing committee, so, this is my fourth study committee, so if we can carve out two of us to actually compile everybody's chapter, and then do an executive summary, a conclusion, and just, just write it up as a nice flowing, easy to read report, I can be on that committee, and then if one other person can join me, we can have a sidebar, because we don't have.
Do we need a committee to?
Quorum?
Do we need, do we need a committee to, to assemble the paragraphs? I don't, I don't feel like we need a committee for that purpose.
Okay.
But, we can work together, we've all been kind of given assignments as to like, sort of where we're at, and, you know, once that stuff gets put, gets, is out there, then it, I think it'll be easier to determine, like, if there's, if somebody needs to tie everything together, or if there's anything additional. We'll also have some feelings about these things that we'll want to discuss before, you know, so that'll, that'll be, you know, but, I don't think we need a committee for the committee.
Alyssa, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, that makes sense, I don't know, I should know, but I'll put it out there that I don't know. In regards to working on a shared Google document by committee, is that, is that okay? No, or is that open meeting?
It, it, it could easily run afoul, like.
Okay.
If anybody wanted to challenge our process, for whatever reason, you know, good motivation, or not, it could run afoul of that, you know, we're, we're deliberating the matter, so.
Okay.
So for now.
But if we met after the holidays and sat here with a laptop and had a meeting all together, and did a group writing exercise and just tied everything together.
It would probably be, we'd probably be able to knock it out in the one, in the one.
Yeah.
Which I think is probably the best way to do it, because we'll have, we'll have better thoughts too, and, and each of the sections, to the extent that, whatever sections there are, will be, you know, substantially complete.
And I'll, I'm, I'm good for 350 to 500 words as an opening to explain who did what, what, what we're doing, what this document's all about, what our findings are, and then chapter one, chapter, I'll, I'll have that done for us before we even meet. Once you feed me the chapters, I'll have that done for us, in draft form, and then, then we'll vote on that, that's gonna have to be voted on then.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, no, that's fine. Jen, your feelings on it?
Sounds great, all of it.
Patrick, we know your feelings, Emilio?
Sorry.
I mean, I, I do kind of agree with Patrick, where I, I do think that there's that, however, I do wonder, like, because this is my first committee that I've been part of, what is the output of the committee, and for, is it a document that you hand to the select board that says, this is our recommendation, or?
So, unless you folks direct me otherwise, I would like to deliver at a, as an agenda item to the select board, a written doc, a written report, which is essentially, reiterates our process.
Right.
Also explains what we experienced, and.
The findings.
What tools we use, such as surveys or interviews, and then the findings, third piece, and then the most important piece.
Recommendations.
After voted, what we recommend.
Yeah, right.
So I'm gonna send it to them two weeks in advance, and then I'm gonna go in and present it publicly. And answer questions, I would invite all of you to share that space with me, and kind of like, drop it in their lap, but, we're not gonna just drop it in the lap, we're gonna say, this is what we went through, this is what we experienced, these are the tools we used, this is what we learned, here's what we recommend.
Reasonable.
Get it done by March.
Yeah, that's also.
March 1st.
That's also a good timeline, you know.
That's what I'm thinking.
For our next meeting to get the information, like, for the meeting after that, to have called the information and have some ideas, and have some discussion about what we think, and get to drafting, and then, then, then you're looking at one meeting and then March, it's fine, or, you know, somewhere in that range, it's all doable, that's very reasonable.
All right, so the only two votes we needed to take tonight were successful, we organized the committee and we adopted the survey questions, with some amendments, so, any other question or comments, or something that we should add at the next meeting agenda, besides the obvious?
I think, I think we got it well-covered and a good, and a good roadmap, so I, I don't have anything additional.
Alyssa, Jen?
I agree.
All right, can you help me, just very quickly, help me with, what the agenda should be for November 19th? It's gonna be, what, a review of survey results? Review of draft chapters?
I, would that mean we would meet before November 19th to collect survey results?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna collect them.
Or would that be do, would that be something we do in that meeting? Because we were talking about collaborating together on that.
On the 19th.
I think that can happen, I think that can happen outside of an open meeting, I think getting the data and just compiling it, it doesn't have to be done, like, in this room.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, we don't have to physically.
That can be offline.
Gotcha.
So we'll review the survey results, we'll review, the review of draft chapters of the report for March of 2026. What else, what else should we have on the agenda?
That's gonna be a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is, that's the first time we're getting the data, so we're not even, you know, so that'll, that'll be, you know, the next meeting seems like the meeting where we're gonna have, you know, unless we get the, unless we get the data ahead of time of the meeting, we won't be, we won't really know what the town thinks until Emilio says, this is what the town thinks, and so then, then with that information, we can, you know, put our heads together and think about what we might recommend based on that input.
Okay, and, and recommendations for the, the report to select board? Okay, I mean, that's simple.
I, I would just clarify that we, I don't feel that we would be confirming our recommendations on that meeting, right?
No, absolutely not, no.
Yeah.
Just starting to formulate.
Review of survey results, review of draft chapters, and, and, so let me, let me clarify that, I think we should just leave it at those two.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, that's.
Yeah, it's simple, simple, it's fine. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Well, thank you again, tremendous, I appreciate it, we, we got it done in just about an hour, which is my goal, and everybody's busy and committed, and, but you've all taken a tremendous amount of load as well, so thank you for that, and I'm really, I'm really happy that you've joined me in this important initiative, so. All right, so we'll see each other, I guess, in Groveland Day, we'll get the surveys off the ground, that's, that's exciting, so.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting at 6:38 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further comment or questions, or amendments to that motion? None. Alyssa, how do you vote? For or against?
For.
Jen?
For.
Patrick?
Four.
Emilio?
Four.
And so it's unanimous, we closed the meeting, thank you very much.